25 auditorium, gymnasium, cafeteria are all going to be getting enhanced Wi-Fi coverage. Once the Wi-Fi coverage is expanded, it will easily cover the areas to get those two cameras, these are the only two cameras back online. At the same time, um, for CADA security cameras, we have nine. We're going to be adding at least two more to just, you know, even improve our security. And this is being done in, in, in coordination, I believe, uh, he's working with, uh, I want to say, uh, Mr. Moore and I believe also Ms. Cotay, if I remember correctly. Um, there's an option of community oriented policing services, a COPS grant through the US Department of Justice. And so working to secure this federal funding for an enhanced CADA system should be really, really an improvement. So, uh, so just to keep everyone updated on, on, on that, those security features. We're always trying to improve our security. Uh, we're also in the process of adding a remote entrance system. As you can see, we have the fence just about complete. Uh, this remote entrance system where visitors and guests can be given access to our campus from outside the perimeter fence. So, so just to kind of, uh, in a nutshell, the campus fence is going to have two main entrances. Uh, the school office, at least six staff will have multiple iPads, at least probably three iPads where they all can have access. So all six staff members over there to monitor the gates, especially the gate by the school office. The district office is also at least six staff members that are here right now are going to have multiple iPads also to monitor the escape. So you're going to have six sets of eyes here with multiple, um, monitors. We're going to have at least six sets of eyes over there with at least three iPads. And so another feature I've asked Mr. Simon to focus on is our school safety team. That includes, uh, Ms. Adicon, Mr. Sezno, Chief Tivitt, Deputy Richardson, Mr. Yon, Mr. Cotton, Mr. Simon. They have a CADA application on their cell phones. So trying to see if we can also make sure they have access to not just the six iPads in both district offices, but especially Chief Tivitt, Mr. Yon, Mr. Cotton, uh, Deputy Richardson, uh, and Mr. Simon. They're always moving around, so more sets of eyes on the main entrance points. So that's just kind of the summary of where we are with security. We're always trying to improve our security cameras, our features. And, uh, this grant is a real good opportunity and so we will keep you posted on that. And, um, Mr. Moore is helping, Mr. Simon and Ms. Cotay with that. So, uh, that's where we are with a little update, just, uh, an ongoing, um, with all of our cameras, not just the CADA, but the real link, we're only two of the forty that are not working. And we're trying to get that fixed based on the information that shared with you. So ninety-five percent of the real link cameras are operating and all nine of the CADA security cameras are operating.
I think you just can have the two entrances into the campus.
Well, there's going to be the two main entrances, yes, sir. These two, right?
So when you have special events, ball games, concerts, whatever, all entry will be through those two gates?
Well, uh, that's the plan. But I know, of course, I talked to Mr. Yon and our, and our safety team.
We'll probably open the gate by a softball field for the events.
We're going to make up the accommodations necessary, but, um, during the day to day, these are going to be the two main entrances right here. This will, it helps just, if anything, the school office more than us, keep track of who's coming in, when, what time, students, parents. Coming late, coming to pick up students early. We have the six foot chain link fence now with Mr. Yon and his team. They close it at eight thirty. That way all the, the traffic has to come through here and now they'll come through one of these two entry points. So the school office will know who's on campus for the most part at all times.
All four, like this, trying to get in my mind where the, the gates are going to be for people to enter the campus.
We're going to have, we will have that, that right here by between the softball backstop and where you come into the gym. We'll have, uh, I believe a rolling gate there too, I would say, but we'll have, we have multiple people have, have keys to open that up.
Will you have a gate going down that sidewalk that goes towards the gym, in front of the gym? For where basketball games where everybody comes through here?
We'll, we'll have a gate there right in front of the gym too.
Right in front of the gym, we're going to, we're going to keep that gate in case of emergency people coming through those double doors. But, um, we're going to keep all that in place as far as with the security cameras and entry points.
I think during school hours, everything could be locked, but then after school hours, during games and events, then it'll be open.
For emergencies, uh, the, Mr. Richardson has a key and the sheriff's department's going to have a key. So anytime that we, somebody needs to come on the campus, uh, sheriff's department has a key on their office.
Looks good. So then we'll have to work out some of the sheriff's office that when, if there's a call in the football field during the, are you going, are you going to leave that, that gate open or closed?
For, for practice, you mean, like if somebody gets, like, rapping, yeah? Yeah, we'll probably have you open for practice.
Just out of curiosity though, I know you said that the sheriff's department has a key. Wouldn't it be more ideal to have like a keypad for the gate? That way whoever on duty doesn't have to, you know, go to the office to get the key, then to come back to let the ambulance in or, you know, something like, wouldn't it be easier?
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll get there. Of course, you're going to get everything set up and brought up, but that's, that's the plan eventually, but for now.
We could buy a lock with a combination, the number.
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
No, just a lock.
Yeah, it's just like a padlock, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, 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 we'll get there first. We're going to make sure we have our keys in place for cottons to come over, do a walkthrough, let us know what the options are. That's, that's been discussed before, um, other ways, but I'm going to just, uh, we'll get there. And once we're there, I will give you guys that. Okay, okay.
Let's see, let's see, do a combination. Everybody in town will have a combination in here.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, so we're got us going to go walk through. We will personally be with them and I'm sure they're going to give us the options and we'll share with them the options that are being shared with us.
With that.
Okay, we can move on to the next item.
No, good job, I'm happy. Yeah, great.
Okay, next item, there's been the administrative report on the primary, you get a little data presentation.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have a report focusing on the DIBELS, very intensive and very, uh, very, uh, on depth. And so we want to really focus on this, uh, report for you. We will be bringing forth, uh, other testing data in a later time. We have some more members of our team to present, but we wanted to really focus on this because there's a lot of information, a lot of good information. And I always look to go with Ms. Cotay, who used to be our mid-on-line reading co-coordinator. It's going to kind of take the helm here because our other coordinators are at the leading change, leading change conference. But, um, Ms. Cotay, please take it away.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. So we have here the result for end of the year, um, DIBELS assessment. So first off, we have the kindergarten classroom. If you remember our color band, the red stands for well below benchmark. Um, the yellow stands for below benchmark, the green stands for at benchmark, and then the blue stands for above benchmark. And then number one in here would signify beginning of the year scores, and then the number two would signify end of the year numbers. So, so for well below, beginning of the year, we have four students identify well below benchmark. And then the number dropped down at the end of the year to three, and then one of them moved to at benchmark. Um, these three students were identified to our special education program and one's EBL program. Um, moving on, at the beginning of the year, eight students were identified below benchmark. Those eight students, um, it dropped to one, and then three moved to at benchmark, and then four moved to above benchmark. So that's really good progress. And then for at benchmark, beginning of the year, we have two at benchmark students, and then those two moved to above benchmark. And then lastly, at the start of the school year, we have one kid already above benchmark, and at the end of the year, that kid still stayed above benchmark. So at the end of the year, we have about four, five, six, seven kids above benchmark in the kindergarten classroom. Do you have any questions on this page? Okay, so next. All right, so this is the overall combination, um, of the class. Um, if we are to identify the areas of strengths, it would be under letter sounds and then decoding. And then the area to focus on would be the word reading fluency. Um, this page would highlight the difference from the beginning of the year and then the end of the year data. What we want to look in here is that the first two colors, your red and your yellow, you want the scores for end of the year to go down. And then for your green and your blue, by the end of the year, you want your scores to go up. So for well below benchmark, beginning of the year, we have twenty-seven percent, it went down to twenty-one percent. Um, for below benchmark, we have fifty-three percent, and then it went down to five percent. Um, at benchmark from thirteen percent, our numbers went up to twenty-six percent. And then the above benchmark from seven percent, it went really high to forty-seven percent. So we really have good, um, growth in our kindergarten. So for first grade, um, this one, we divided it into two categories, the non-EL and then for the EL population. Um, beginning of the year, we identified six students well below benchmark for non-EL population. And then it dropped down at the end of the year to four, and then two moved to below benchmark. Um, I know that the three of these, we identified it on your special education population and one was captured for child endangerment. And then moving on for below benchmark, at the beginning of the year, we have four students. We identified those four students, three actually moved to at benchmark and then one to above benchmark. That was really good. And then the seven students at the beginning of the year that scored at benchmark, they all moved to above benchmark, first grade class. So for EL population, um, three students, beginning of the year, well below benchmark, at the end of the year, it dropped to two. We're continuously working on those two, and then one moved to, um, below, um, benchmark. So that's that. And then combination altogether, um, the EL and the non-EL population, um, if we look at the data in here, their strengths are in the area of letter sounds and decoding, and then the area of focus would be the reading fluency. All right, and then comparison of the beginning of the year and end of the year. Again, these two we wanted to go down, and then these two we want the scores to go up. So forty-five percent at the beginning of the year went down, twenty-five percent. Um, twenty students, twenty percent rather, um, twenty percent. And then here, thirty-five percent, um, if you notice, it looks like, huh, it went down. But if you look at the above benchmark, we didn't have any above benchmark because your numbers here went here and here. So we have forty percent, eight students went above benchmark. So that's where your numbers went. All right. So for second grade class, again, um, we divided it into two categories, the non-EL and then the EL. Beginning of the year, we started, the class started with five students well below benchmark, and then it dropped to three, and then two moved to below benchmark. And then the six students, um, and I know these three students, um, were in our special education, um, program. And then the below benchmark continuing, we started with six students, and then it dropped to two, and then three, um, moved to at benchmark, and then one even moved to above benchmark. For benchmark, we started with four students, dropped to one, and then three moved to above benchmark. And then for our EL population, three, we started rather with five, and then it dropped to three. One moved to below benchmark, and then one moved to at benchmark. Oh, sorry, rather, one moved to the above benchmark there. So that's that. Thank you. And then combination, this is altogether of EL and non-EL population. So when we combine all the scores, their area of strength would be decoding and reading fluency, and then the area of focus would be the basic comprehension. And then comparison of beginning of the year and end of the year, um, from forty-eight percent went down to twenty-two percent. Twenty-three percent went down to nineteen percent. Thirteen percent went up to nineteen, and then sixteen went all the way up to forty-one. That's the second grade class. And our third grade class, um, the non-EL population, remember, this is the class with, um, the most number of special education program. We have about five identified in this class. One is, one took the out, right, out assessment. So we have identified here three at the beginning of the year, um, the non-EL population, and then it stayed three. Um, then below, um, benchmark, we started with seven, and then, I can't remember this data in here. The one, was this the one, the, the chronic health?
Hmm, but chronic health is the well below.
This one is the chronic health. We have a student that has some chronic health, that's why the absences was more than usual, so, yeah. And then the one here, four rather, one is at below benchmark, four was moved to green at benchmark, and then one went to above benchmark. So beginning of the year, we already have three benchmark students, and then one, it was dropped to one, retained one, and then two moved to above benchmark. And for our EL population, um, one student at benchmark, then went to above benchmark. So overall, as a class, combining again the EL and the non-EL, their area of strengths would be the decoding and the word reading. The area of focus would be basic comprehension. So it's similar to second grade class, their area of focus to be the basic comprehension. So, um, compared to beginning and end of the year, well below from sixteen to seventeen, you might be wondering, they're the same students, thirteen and seventeen, I mean, three and three, but sixteen and seventeen, because throughout the year, we had some students, you know, withdrawing and then involving and then withdrawing, and then it's all been done. So for below benchmark, from forty-two percent went down to six, twenty-one percent went up to twenty-eight, and then twenty-one went up to fifty percent. So that's a really good number there. So what are our next steps? Um, we will have a move on when reading camp for a total of four weeks, two weeks in June and then two weeks in July. And the primary focus of this program is concentrated on our third graders, who score the performance levels one and two on the AASA assessment or AAST testing for third graders. And levels one and two, when we identify, these are the areas of coding and the basic comprehension. As what you've noticed earlier in the past slides, the area of focus or means is the comprehension part. So that's going to be the focus as well for move on when reading camp. And then we will also send our teachers, two of our teachers will participate in comprehensive, this lecture training, that's in June eighteen to twenty-four. I mean, it's an intensive six-day workshop, and then we plan to reinforce, you know, an echo day training at the start of the school year to support other teachers as well. And then we have professional development conference, about ten of our teachers are now in Phoenix. Um, they're attending Teachers Institute and Leading Change, and we want to empower our teachers. And so the Teachers Institute focuses on instructional approaches and classroom technique, and then Leading Change is centered on leadership development and educational updates. And then our, our annual July Jump Start Program to further support student readiness and engagement. And then, um, we have submitted a grant application for a new position. Um, it's called the Instructional Support. Um, I think in other schools it may be called as a reading technician. But we are hoping, once this is approved, this position will specifically focus on primary grade level to support their early reading skills. That's about it.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Do you have no public comments? First item is, I will make the motion to the office, the superintendent.
I will second.
Any superintendent? No, if there's, if there's discussion, we can.
I'm sorry, can I just add, um, for E, we added an item. This is, uh, normal stuff we do, it's our liability insurance and work and comp. We have to renew it every year, and it usually is put on some agenda, but I just wanted to point it out so that it was just like, it's, it's an issue. Tyler and, and Ben already looked through it and gave everybody the thumbs up, so I just wanted to point it out. It's just that, but it's only this.
Are there any questions or discussion on the superintendent? Okay.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, personnel, first item, certified employment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year of teacher Richard Rivenon.
Mr. President, members of the board, Richard Rivenon was a teacher at Almond Schools from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, has been interviewed for a position as an elementary teacher. Recommend the employment of Richard Rivenon as an elementary teacher for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, may I have the motion?
I will make the motion.
I'm, so, if there's no question or discussion, we'll call for the vote.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next up, we have a certified employment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for teacher Alice Cadiz.
Mr. President, members of the board, Alice Cadiz, who was a teacher at Almond Schools from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-two, has been interviewed for a position as elementary teacher. Recommend the employment of Alice Cadiz as an elementary teacher for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, I will make that motion.
I will second.
Any question or discussion? Now, call for the motion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next up, under personnel, additional, if there's a certified contract for Elizabeth Blanchard.
Mr. President, members of the board, the administration is requesting approval of the issues of a certified contract to Elizabeth Blanchard, who was hired in January twenty twenty-five as a performing arts teacher. Recommend the approval of the issues of a certified contract to Elizabeth Blanchard for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, may I have the motion?
I will make the motion.
I'm seconded. And if there's any question or discussion, we'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next up, under personnel, we have additional contract days for Shiny Vodas.
Mr. President, members of the board, the administration is requesting additional days in June for Shiny Vodas to shadow and be trained by the outgoing school office secretary and the administration. Sixteen additional contract notice appointment days are being requested for Shiny Vodas to ensure smooth transition of staff. Recommend the approval of additional three weeks be added to Shiny Vodas' twenty-four, twenty-five notice of appointment.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'm seconded. Any question or discussion? And I'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next up, personnel, additional contract days for Shiny Vodas.
Mr. President, members of the board, it is necessary to inventory and organize the media center, library, books and storage. Susana Layon and the administration are requesting extra days up to three weeks from June ninth to the twenty-seventh be added to inventory and organize the library media center. Recommend the approval of up to three weeks be added to Susana Layon's contract notice of appointment.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I will make the motion.
I'm seconded. And if there's any question or discussion, we'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next up, we have approval of staff for the K three-six Jump Start, July seventh to tenth, July fourteen through seventeenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, Jump Start is offered to students from grade K to six for two weeks in July twenty twenty-five. Four days a week, six hours, four days a week, six hours a day, from July seventh to the tenth and July fourteenth to the seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Students who, who will participate will have a chance to get a head start at the classroom routines, the procedures for the upcoming school year, assignment, charging support in math and ELA. Six teachers from K six plus three parent professionals will work with students in July for eight days, six hours per day. We have the kinder staff, we have the parent professionals, we have our campus security, Chief Tivitt. Recommend the employment of the above staff for K six Jump Start, July seventh to tenth and fourteen to seventeen, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I will make that motion.
I will second.
If there's any question or discussion, we'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next up, extra paid positions.
Mr. President, members of the board, the following individuals have expressed an interest in the corresponding extra paid positions. You have, um, have their names there below. Um, it also includes George Simon, Powerschool mentor, just to note there. I'm, I'm not sure if he was there on Monday, but we have him here for sure for today. Recommend the employment of these other individuals for the corresponding position. Coaching with the corresponding extra paid positions.
Okay. I will make the motion on Jennifer Guthrie, who's head chief.
I will second.
Any discussion? Can I have your vote?
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries three with one member abstaining.
Yep. Okay, may I have a motion on Eldred Wim?
Uh, Garrett, and I will make the motion.
I will second. And if there's no question or discussion, we'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed or abstaining? Okay, so motion carries three members approving, one abstaining.
Okay. I will now ask for a motion from the other locals, as part of the administrative assistant.
I will make the vote, sir.
I'm seconded. If there's no, uh, discussion, we'll call for the vote.
So I, I, like, just, just, so I understand the chain of command and what's going on with, with this whole thing. So Jose is, is being asked to be approved as athletic director. So Maria and Lisa, they won't be athletic directors, they will just be basically, what? Administrative assistants?
Well, yeah, what we've had, what we've had before, we've had this, uh, like, um, yeah, like, uh, Jose is the athletic director, and he serves administrative assistants, but also just coordinating, uh, schedules, checking on students, uh, eligibility, things like that, so.
So they would have no supervisory responsibility over coaches, right?
No, the chain of command goes from the coaches directly to our, Mr. Yon, then to Ms. Adicon, then to some.
Anything personal need?
I'm going to get asked, that's why. I'm sure, bring it in.
You're going to ask, you're going to call for the vote?
Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Okay.
Any abstaining?
I second.
All right, okay, sorry, okay. Uh, motion carries four to zero.
Okay, next up, we have a motion on Lisa Foyle, as part of the administrative assistant.
I will make the motion.
I'm seconded. And if there's any discussion, we'll, we'll, I'll call for the vote.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
And next up, I will make the motion for Jose Yon as the athletic director.
I will second.
If there's any discussion or questions on this, we'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
And Mr. George Simon has been Powerschool mentor, may I have a motion on that?
I will make the motion.
I will second.
I don't know, what are the parts going to be natural? Uh, Mr. Guffey, I'll say a few words, and I know the side of what she wants to shoot, and also, um, I don't know. Very critical, just to help with a little bit of everything, uh, with scheduling crises with attendance. Um, those are, the attendance is a big thing, Powerschool attendance, that's our, that's our funding. So that's the main, you know, Mr. Casey was a Powerschool mentor, so long Mr. Simon's going to take that, but, um, is there anything else you want to do?
Great, right? Thanks for the interview.
So Powerschool adding staff for access, uh, to Powerschool. So the teacher has, you know, questions, needs assistance, to go get Mr. Simon's situation. And if we have technical, uh, needs, so she, he will be the, the main person that will reach out to Powerschool, because this can be intensive, like, closing of the year is coming and we are prepping for, for this. So he will be, uh, a big help in the technical side. And in the past, we had Mr. Casey, we don't have that anymore. So we're all stepping up and learning, learning a lot, actually.
So, sorry about the questions. So, Mr. Simon, he will just be working with the technicality at Powerschool. Is this a forty-hour a week job, a regular, regular job, or, or what is it?
It's actually, Mr. Guffey, Mr. Guffey, he's our IT manager, so he's kind of like, covers anything and everything. But he also has to take, he's also going to be focused on this as well. Whereas before, it was more so Mr. Casey, he's going to have his own responsibilities and his own. And so Mr. Casey was kind of like, this, this sort of thing that I saw over the years.
Plus more.
Plus more, so you have demon students, or, is that what I hear from the, on the grapevine? And that guy's going to be taking the other responsibility that Mr. Casey has.
Yeah, he is, yes.
We're all stepping up, yes.
Primarily, Mr. Guffey, Mr. Sezno's going to be the dean of students. He's also going to be called on to do a little, you know, looking at data as well. Mr. Simon, and also we're on Powerschool, but we need, like, we need a, and like a main person as Powerschool mentor for it. That's going to be Mr. Simon.
Mr. Simon's this young kid that runs around here all the time?
Yes.
Okay. He's, he's incredibly intelligent, so, yeah.
So he's not.
No, no, he's, he's well qualified for, yeah, yeah.
He can put it all together.
And Powerschool also, it does all of our lunch plans, and they just brought out school messenger. So school messenger where we, we notify by text, email, all of the parents. That's now owned by Powerschool too. So anytime we have problems with that, I would email Mr. Casey and then he would call Powerschool for that. That's going to be your.
We'll be willing to reach out. Did you mention that Powerschool is also an online system? Yeah, we started that last year. It was so much easier, so much easier.
Addresses phone numbers, we're getting some texts.
Yeah, I know, but he's had to deal with that, with grades all the time, right? I kind of have an idea, you know, with Mr. Casey, with those, including the, and the decks on the grades. So I missed that all that, I just.
Okay. If there's more.
Please call.
If there's no more discussion on that, we'll call for the vote on Mr. Simon.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Security could get a very looped.
Sorry about that, it was on, it was on silent. Sorry about that, it was on, it was on silent.
Just about voting about this. Is it possible, is that, like, when we have, like, the Guthrie Girls, can we rope the Guthrie Girls together and rope everyone else together? That way, that way, there's, like, just the vote for them, and then, so that we're not, like, doing it individually?
I think, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I love you. There might be somebody on here that I don't want to vote for.
Well, not true. I didn't think about it.
You put them all in the group, then I'd have to vote on everybody, or, so I think.
Okay.
Well, actually, in that case, you can pull anybody out of that list and say, I would like to have an individual vote on this person. And then we vote the group, and then we vote on that individual.
You have to change the motion, right?
But I think that's why, I think that's why we had, we did it individually, so we could address everybody individually, right? Yep. And you can't separate them to different groups.
Okay, so our next item then is the twenty-four, twenty-five performance payout.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, twenty-four, twenty-five performance payout data has been calculated by the leadership team. The board is being asked to review and award the attached proposition three oh one fund to qualified teachers in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Recommend the approval of the attached performance pay payout for certified teachers who met criteria from the twenty-four, twenty-five, the twenty-four, twenty-five three oh one.
Okay, I will make that motion.
I will second.
Any question or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next up, approval of the annual performance-based compensation for the principal.
Mr. President, members of the board, approve the annual performance-based compensation for the principal for achievement on performance schools for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Performance-based compensation in a year with the principal is five percent of the base salary. This is a board decision. We saw her share of three main goals she had. She performed her job, this side of board with pride and distinction, and it's been a way to share with you. I'll take her seven days a week and plus on Sunday, she did a great job.
Do you want to make that motion?
I will second.
If there's any discussion on that? And then I'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next item is approval of the annual performance-based compensation for the superintendent.
Mr. President, members of the board, approve the annual performance-based compensation for the superintendent for achievement on performance schools for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The performance-based compensation in a year is four times five percent of the base salary. This is a board decision.
I will make that motion.
I will second.
And if there's any question or discussion, I'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, on business, the first of which is intergovernmental agreement with the OHS.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is very critical. July twenty twenty-two, the Aho U S D Unified School District entered into an agreement with Beyond Tech's Valley Unified School District to increase student achievement and align classroom instruction to state standards. Now, the district will need to annually agree to an intergovernmental agreement. The agreement is attached and has been approved by A U S D's legal counsel. Recommend the approval of the attached I G A between Aho Schools and Beyond Tech. This is very important, it's a vital online curriculum framework, and this has been a great act.
Okay, I will make that motion.
I will second.
If there's any question or discussion, we'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next item, intergovernmental agreement with Valley Unified School District.
Mr. President, members of the board, this is equally important. Annually, Aho Unified School District enters into an agreement with AZ E D S outreach program, Valley Unified School District, which provides Aho U S D with staff development and training to mature active students that is being submitted to the state through Power School. The agreement is attached and been approved by A U S D's legal counsel. Recommend the approval of the attached I G A between Aho Schools and Valley U S D AZ E D outreach program.
Okay, call for a motion.
I will make the motion.
I will second. And if there's any discussion, we'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next up, we have out of state travel for Power School University in San Diego, California.
Mr. President, members of the board, AZ E D S and Power School are recommending our Power School mentor, George Simon, take part in Power School University Conference for Power School direct mentors. Power School is an incredibly important tool to ensure our school's funding, as well as our database to the information system, lunch counts, teacher grades, and our school messenger system. For Mr. Simon to be effective and able to assist students, staff, and parents with their power school issues, it is necessary to take several classes so he can step in and take over Power School. Per board policy, all staff out of state travel must be board-approved. I spoke with Mr. Moore, finance consultant. He stated this is a good strategy for A U S D. For Mr. Simon to receive this P D, this is the best practice. And he's recommended the approval of George Simon to attend Power School, personally attending the conference from twenty-two to twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Call for a motion.
I will make the motion.
I will second. And I'm curious, is he going to be driving to the district?
Um, I'm sure we'll get that figured out, but most likely, yeah. Is he going to move back to India after he's sent a lot of string? Is he going to move back to India after? No, he's probably staying in Australia.
If there's no more discussion, we'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
And next item, we have approval of government board policies.
Mr. President, members of the board, this will be the second reading. Section D revision will lead to a reorganization advice. Similar policy content and maintains comprehensive information for effective board governance and district operations. The policy documents listed above have either been removed, added to reclassification, or if the policy documents containing similar topics are revised. Documents not listed in this comparison document from section D did not change. Almost to the same format as Monday, but still with you in the board. Policy D A, fiscal management goals, priority objectives, policy D B, annual budget. New regulation, D B R, annual budget, schedule preparation, funding format, and post submission. Deleted policy D V C, regulation D V C R, policy D V F, budget areas and reviews, adoption process. Deleted policy D V I, policy D V J, budget transfers. D D, funding proposals, grants, and special projects. Divid D D E, funding proposals, grants, and special projects. Deleted policy D D A, D V C. Policy D F A, revenues from investments. Deleted policies D F B, D F D, D F F. Policy D G, banking services. Deleted policy D G A. Policy D G D, credit cards. Policy D I, fiscal accounting and reporting. Deleted policy D I A. Policy D I B, types of funds revolving funds. Policy D I C, financial reports and statements. Deleted policy D I C A. Policy D I D, inventories. D I D R, regulation inventories. D I E, audits, financial monitoring. D I E R, regulation audits, financial monitoring. Policies D J, purchasing, D J E, bidding purchasing procedures. Regulation D J E R, bidding purchasing procedures. D J G, vendor contract regulations. Regulation D J G R, vendor contract regulations. Deleted D G A, D G A R. Policy D K, payment procedures. Divid D K, payment procedures. New activity, D K E B, payment payroll. Deleted D K E, D K A E. Policy D A, school properties disposition. And policy D E D H, public participation at board meetings. Recommend that the board policies be approved upon the second reading, Mr. President.
Okay, I will make the motion.
I will second.
If there's any question or discussion, we'll, we'll call for the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Next up, we have possible new agenda items for the next meeting.
Mr. President, if I could just, in a quick little fast, I wanted just to give a reminder for everyone. Mr. Sezner will be available July seventh, ninth for the vision of school safety. And that type will be in issues. He was one of the members that could be changed, so I can make it this month, but he, he's already been, I'm giving notice that he will make this presentation next month.
Do you have business?
On July seventh, you said?
July seventh, and I, we'll shut to the seventh.
And for that thing once, then I will make the motion to adjourn.
I will second.
So if there's any discussion, we'll move.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
You can adjourn at six forty-five?
Six forty-five. Ready to begin? I want to two. It's like six forty-five.